Okay, go ahead. I would like to call this village board meeting Thursday, September 5, 2024, to order. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mayor Coker.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Here.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Here.
Trustee Light.
Here.
Trustee Maritato.
Here.
Trustee Pojak.
Here.
Trustee Schroder.
Here.
Please stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undeniably, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives are deliberations concerning salaries scheduled for one or more classes of employees pursuant to Open Meetings Act 5, ILCS 120 oblique 29C2. The appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body pursuant to Open Meetings Act 5, ILCS 120 oblique 2C1.
It is for the record, this is for executive session.
Yeah, so is there a motion to recess the executive session for the purpose of discussion, collective negotiation matter between the public body and its employees or their representative or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees pursuant to Open Meetings Act 5, ILCS 120 oblique 2C2 and the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body pursuant to Open Meetings Act 5, ILCS 120 oblique 2C1.
I would just advise that we take, there's a motion for each one. Because there's two matters, let's take, let's do a motion for each executive session.
E, okay, so, so we have two time motion.
We need two motions.
Yes, two motions. I need a motion for that, who's number one? Trustee Light.
I'll make a motion that we go to executive session to discuss collective negotiating matters between public body and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedule for one or more classes of employees pursuant to the Open Meetings Act 5, ILCS 120 slash 2C2.
Who's the second? Trustee Schmidt. And I need second motion for number one.
We need to vote.
We had to, I think.
We did.
Trustee Schmidt made it, we had to finish the first motion.
Yeah, first motion, second.
Then we'll go to the second.
Yeah, second one.
So we need a vote, we need a vote first.
Vote on that.
You want a roll call vote?
Yeah. Roll call vote has to be.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Maritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojak.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Okay, I need a motion for second. Trustee Schmidt.
I move that the board adjourn to executive session to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body pursuant to Open Meetings Act 5, ILCS 120 slash 2C1.
Second.
Trustee Siddiqui, second. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Maritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojak.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
So, I would like to call the village board meeting.
We're adjourned there.
This meeting is recessed to.
We're recessing to the.
Executive session. I would like to call this village board meeting back to order. We now move on to petitions and communications, community announcements, trustee Schmidt, please.
The village of Glendale Heights remembers Patriot Day on Wednesday, September 11th with a silent parade of first responder vehicles followed by a candlelight service at 7:15 PM on the front steps of the village hall. Please join the village of Glendale Heights and the Glendale Heights community as we come together for a moment of silence and reflection on Patriot Day. Never forget those we lost on September 11th, 2001. For more information, please call Jessica at 630-909-5123. If you just finished cleaning out the basement, attic, and garage, and you're looking for a place to sell your stuff, then join us at the annual community garage sale on Sunday, September 22nd from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Camera Park. If you have nothing to sell, then come out and shop for bargains from many different sellers. For registration information, please contact Jessica at 630-909-5123. Thank you.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Join us at Veterans Memorial Park every Thursday for Glendale Heights seasonal market. Shop for food, produce, crabs, and more from locally sourced vendors. A market runs from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM. If you would like to be a vendor or for more information, please contact Tanya McCoe at 630-909-5459. Join the Glendale Heights Police Department for their final movie night with Cops of the Season on Friday, September 13th. Come out to Safety Town as we get into fall season as we watch Halloween Town starting at dusk. The movie is free and refreshment will be served by Glendale Heights Police Officers. Movie Night with the Cops is sponsored by Glendale. Glendale Library, for more information, please contact Tanya McCoe at 630-909-5459.
Trustee Light, please.
Thank you. I'm working with new glasses here, sorry, so. The village of Glendale Heights is gearing up for the annual show and shine car show and swap meet at Camera Park on Sunday, September 22nd from 10:00 AM to 3:30 PM. There will be 18 classes of vehicles on display along with swap meet, food, music, and more. If you're interested in registering a vehicle or signing up to be a swap meet vendor or crafter, please visit glendalehighs.org/carshow to download a registration form. For more information, please contact myself, trustee Michael Light at 630-909-5308. The village of Glendale Heights has many years of history dating back to our founding date of July 13th, 1959. The village invites everyone to attend our open house at Glendale Heights Historic House on Saturday, September 28th from noon to 4:00 PM to learn all about the rich history of our community. The historic house is located at 311 Windy Point Drive at Heritage Park. For more information, please contact myself at 630-909-5308 or contact Jessica at 630-909-5123. Thank you.
You're welcome. Bill, trustee Schmidt, please.
Candidate packets are now available for the April 1st, 2025 consolidated election. The following offices in the village of Glendale Heights will be on the ballot. Village President, Village Clerk, and trustee for districts 2, 5, and 6, depending on which district you reside in. Petition information and packets are available at the village clerk's office located on the second floor of village hall. And for more information, please contact me, Village Clerk Marie Schmidt, at 630-909-5333 or email me at marie__schmidt@glendalehighs.org.
Trustee Maritato, please.
Come on out to Heritage Park for some fishing fun on Saturday, September 28th from 9:00 AM to 11:30 AM at the annual cops and barbers fishing derby in conjunction with Herbert's Fest hosted by the village of Glendale Heights and the FOP Lodge 52. Try your luck at catching some of the trophy fish like catfish, blue gills, and bass that live in Lake Pissara. Registration begins at 9:00 AM and the derby begins promptly at 9:30. We will conclude the fishing derby with a trophy presentation and prizes. Fishing Derby is a country release event. For more information, please contact Jessica at 630-909-5123. Celebrate the fall season at Heritage Park on Saturday, September 28th, following the fishing derby from noon to 4:00 PM at the annual Herbert's Fest. Welcome all in survival with music, crafts, head rise, a chili cook-off, a bass tournament, food and drinks, games, and much more. This fall event is for the entire family with activities for everyone. For more information, please contact Jessica at 630-909-5123. Thank you.
Trustee Pojak.
Mark your calendars, the annual Family Health and Safety Fair will be Wednesday, October 2nd from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM at the sports hub. There will be free activities and stations for everyone, including the teddy bear clinic, flu shots, if you're 18 years older, health screening, channel ID cards, and more. For more information, contact Jessica at 630-909-5123.
Trustee Schroder, please.
The next coffee and chat with the village president and board will be Saturday, September the 7th at the Linda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens from 10:00 AM until noon. If you are unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the village president or village board, please call the village president's office anytime at 630-909-5302 or contact your local district trustee. Also, join the Linda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens throughout the month of September for the National Senior Center Month. The theme for National Senior Center Month is Empowering Connections, where we will be hosting numerous pop-up events, programs, and ice creams socials. Stop by to learn about the various opportunities the center has available. For more information, please call 630-260-6050.
I proclamation or to proclaim the month of September as National Senior Center Month. Number three, a proclamation to proclaim the month of September as National Preparedness Month. Number four, a proclamation to proclaim the month of September as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. Number five, a proclamation to proclaim the month of September as Thyroid Cell Cancer Awareness Month. Number six, a proclamation to proclaim September 15 up to October 15 as Hispanic Heritage Month. Number seven, a proclamation to proclaim the week of September 17 to 23rd as Constitution Week. If there are no objections, I will sign these proclamations. Next, D, public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board meeting on agenda items only from public? Anybody? None? You have that consent agenda before you. Word acting village administrator Doug French, please read the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. One, approval of the regular board meeting minutes of August 15th, 2024. Two, approval of committee of the whole meeting minutes of August 15th, 2024. Three, approval of the accounts payable listing of September 5th, 2024 in the amount of $4,898,670.22. Four, resolution of the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois adopting first quarter fiscal year 2024-2025 budget amendments. Five, a resolution authorizing issuance of a notice of award of authorizing and authorizing the execution of a contract for Parkway tree trimming services. Six, a resolution authorizing execution of a contract extension with Hague Press Incorporated for the 2025 community newsletter and senior activity guide for the village of Glendale Heights. Seven, a resolution authorizing execution of a contract extension with FCL Graphics Incorporated for the 2024-2025 recreation activity guide for the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Eight, resolution to approve and authorize the execution of change order number one to the agreement between village of Glendale Heights, Illinois and Christopher B. Burke Engineering for the furnishing of professional design engineering services for the Westchester Drive and Cambridge Lane Wade Water Main Replacement Project. Nine, resolution authorizing issuance of a notice of award and authorizing the execution of a contract for the purchase and installation of the port in place playground surface at Reskin Park, village of Glendale Heights. Ten, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award and authorizing the execution of a contract with Larson Equipment and Furniture Company for the purchase and installation of basketball court bleachers at the village's sports hub facility. Eleven, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a collective bargaining agreement with Teamsters Local 700 regarding building maintenance employees. Twelve, resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a side letter agreement with Teamsters Local 700 regarding the lead maintenance worker in the wastewater treatment plant. Thirteen, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of the consulting service agreement with Jensen Hughes Incorporated. Fourteen, approval of a pay request number 10 to Trotter Associates for the Mill Pine Lift Station improvements, total amount not to exceed $110,299.10. Fifteen, approval of a pay request number 11 to Bowler Construction Company for the water supplies facility rehabilitation, total amount not to exceed $42,338.32. Sixteen, approval of a pay request number one to J.A. Johnson Paving Incorporated for the 2024 motor fuel tax road program, total amount not to exceed $1,427,865.41. Seventeen is approval of amendments to FY 2024, 2025 non-union pay plan. Eighteen is approval of consent items.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, trustee Schmidt?
I move that the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Trustee Light, second. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Maritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojak.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. Old business, there is none. New business, there is none. Public discussion, is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on agenda item only? None. Adjournment, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Trustee Light.
Motion to adjourn.
Trustee Schmidt.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Maritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojak.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned. Trustee Schroder, you have the committee of the whole meeting.
I would like to call this committee of the whole meeting of Thursday, September the 5th, 2024, to order. Will the clerk please note to his present?
Noted.
Does anyone have any additions or deletions? Yes, Pat.
Meetings.
Anyone else? All right. Committee report. Does Glendale Heights Golf Club Committee have any report?
Yes, I don't have a report for the golf committee, but I do want to say that we had a golf classic last week and we had over, what, 100 golfers?
100, yes.
And I just want to say kudos to everybody that was involved. Jennifer's staff at the golf course, Brian that worked on the golf course, key staff, all the committee members, that they worked really hard getting this done, selling raffle tickets and getting prizes. And most of all, I want to say thank you to all the volunteers. We had a lot of volunteers, they were at 84 degrees out, maybe 85, pretty warm out. So I just want to say kudos to everybody that had anything to do with it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. It's very good to give recognition to people who would volunteer their time.
Delicious.
Historic, thank you. Historical committee?
Absolutely, I do. I just want to take a few minutes and update everybody. We are working on several different ideas about changing some of the inside of the historic house, adding a little bit more display area. We'll be working on that soon. We did have a couple of donations come in. We had somebody drop off a doll from the early 1900s that she had restored and wanted to put it upstairs. I got a chance to meet the, I guess she was the maid or the person that helped out the Redskins while they lived in that house, and she brought her kids with. It was really neat because they went through the house and they explained to me, you know, different rooms, what they did, and where the boys' room is at upstairs was actually the daughter's room. And they knew the house inside and out. They were quite pleased to walk through it again, and they thought it was really, really nice idea. And they had some other stuff that they wanted to look through and possibly donate also. I also had an old clock that was donated by one of the members that they dropped it off, we'll be adding to it. So we're always looking for donations. If we can find some, some of the older stuff, it'd be great, we could add to it. Our last open house, we had about 30 people and it was honoring our senior citizens who walked through the house and they had so much to add to it, you know, the smiles on their faces seeing some of this stuff, you know, remembering back to their childhood days. I mean, technically, I'll be 60 on Saturday, so I'll be a senior, so I'll be able to do that, I can add to it. And our next open house is September 28th, noon to 4:00 PM. So please come on out for that, and if you want to donate some stuff, please get in contact with me. Thank you.
Okay. Ordinance committee has no comment. Parks and Recreation Committee?
No report.
All right, Property Enhancement Committee?
Yes, we held a meeting on the 28th of August. Tom Vales did a presentation on licensing requirements. It was a managers and landlords meeting, unfortunately. The attendance seems to have slipped off a little bit, actually a lot, but he did a very good job and made the committee members especially aware of the licensing requirements. And then we considered some of the committee member concerns, and that was about it for the property enhancement meeting.
That's it, Bill?
That's it.
Thank you. Senior Senate Advisory Committee, the only thing I'd like to say is that the seniors are going to be taking two cruises in this next month. They're going to Alaska and they're going to the East Coast. There's so much activity going on in the senior center that those of you who are seniors, you're really missing a lot by not going to the senior center. There is so much going on. This is September Senior Month, and we will be having some fundraisers and we're planning many things for the Christmas holidays, so please get involved with the seniors. Thank you. Public comment on the committee recommendations and discussion regarding, anybody wish to say something? No? Is there anyone in the public that'd like to make a comment?
We have a committee recommendation, Mary.
Pardon?
We have C, a committee recommendation for planning and zoning.
Where? No, I have to follow the sheet. Right, it was written here. Public comments?
It's right there. Committee recommendation.
Yeah, we didn't get down there yet. Oh, okay, I'm sorry, we didn't get down there yet. All right, committee recommendations. Planning and zoning commission recommendations. A recommendation to approve an application for conditional use to allow a drive-through through the tobacco establishment in a C2 community commercial district for Three Heads Go Incorporated, located at 1227 Glen Allen Road. All right. Is there a motion to move this to the board with a recommendation? Yes, Bill?
I move that we move this to the board with the recommendation to concur.
Second.
Discussion? None. Roll call vote, please. Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui. Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Maritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojak.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Mayor Coker.
Yes.
All right, and Pat, you have something you want to talk about?
Well, we have, we had the discussion. We got.
Discussions regarding, there is none. Is there anybody in the?
Is that supposed to be for public discussion of all, any? Yeah, no, 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 no. So we're at, we're at other for the.
Right, and Pat?
Right.
Okay, I was, I've been kicking this around, if maybe if the board likes the idea, I'd like to have a public, like a town hall meeting, set a date where we can have the residents come, come to the meeting if they have any questions. We have, I would like the staff to be there. Maybe a setup on the screen where other money is being spent and questions and answers, like a town hall meeting. So I'm just kicking around, see what you guys think.
Is it, are you talking about for upcoming pledge season?
No, no, just like a town hall meeting, have the residents come, set a date, and let's listen if they have any concerns or issues, let's listen to them.
Sure, I'm fine with that, I mean.
I don't know, see what, take, you know, I don't know, take a poll, see what they think, and maybe we can set up a date.
It would be more in the format of a special meeting if the board, if all the board is going to be there.
I want the whole board to be there, I want the staff to be there.
It would be a special meeting and the agenda could just be open discussion, town hall discussion, that's all. Yeah, but it would be a special meeting.
We've done a special meeting on a Saturday before, two years ago, we did one.
Yeah.
We can do the same type of event.
Well, what do you think, Bill?
Would this be in the evening or in the afternoon?
I don't know, what's Saturday, maybe probably a Saturday?
Well, the last time we did it was on Saturday, right?
I don't know.
We did it, we actually did it in place of coffee with the mayor on a Saturday morning.
Maybe we could do, I don't know, November, December, somewhere around there. What do you think, Bill?
Sounds good to me.
I have no problem with it.
What would be the difference between this and the Saturday, with the questions?
Saturday with the coffee with the mayor, that's all you get is five of the same people. I want a town hall meeting where anybody in the village can come.
No, I'm, you know, disagreeing with you, I just wanted to know what's the difference between this meeting that you're looking to call and the meeting that we have on the first Saturday?
Well, to get input from, get input from the residents.
All right.
If they have any issues. I want to show the residents where, I want, on the screen where all the money's going because there's rumors that our money is flying all over the place, investments, it's all, you know.
An open forum, basically.
Right, right. If they have a question, let them speak and we'll have the staff here for answers.
On December 7th, we have a coffee with the mayor. December is kind of the start of our budget time anyway, you want to do something on the December 7th?
Perfect.
Bill and I can get together and map out a plan, residents can come and have input into what is in the current budget, and if they have ideas for what's in the future budget, we can certainly listen to that as well.
Perfect.
Okay, so I don't know, you feel just about.
Only depends on everybody, to me, it doesn't make any difference, if I have the time, I'll be there.
Mary?
Well, if that's what the board wants, I'll go along with what the board says.
I don't know. Bill, is it yes?
Amen.
Mike? Where Siddiqui at?
I think he's dealing with his phone.
Oh, should we wait for him to get back, or, I mean?
No, all you need, all you need are four people to agree.
We'll just let them know.
All right, so, okay, then we'll do it.
All right, work on a date and then we'll let them know what date you suggested.
December 7th.
December 7th.
December 7th is a coffee with the mayor date.
So would you have this right after the coffee for the mayor or included with the coffee with the mayor?
Oh, in place of.
In place of?
Right. It would be the coffee with the mayor.
It'd be up here. It'd just be.
All right, that sounds good.
Expanded coffee.
I'll bring you some doughnuts.
All right.
All right, sounds good then, okay.
December 7th.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board? All right. Uh, is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board?
Mike, I'm Taveros Glendale Heights. I've got actually three points I want to be able to present to the board and if you can respond to them however you like and whoever would like to speak. I've seen a significant increase use of E V scooters, E V bikes, E V skateboards and so forth on the streets of Glendale Heights. I've also seen two accidents involving vehicles. The riders of these do not adhere to the rules of the road. They talk or they're texting on their phone as they're using these devices. Do we have any ordinances in place that can curb these types of incidents? Are there any laws that our police department can enforce? That was one. Also in today's news, a senior was scammed for almost a million dollars through pig butchering. If you don't know what that means, someone befriends you, gains your trust over time and then asks for money for various reasons. Then they come in for the kill. Too often, the person on the other end is a scammer who takes all of your assets with little chance of getting one dollar back. How are we educating our residents, especially the seniors, to avoid these types of scams in our community? Lastly, between the flats apartment complex and the back of the strip mall that actually has Aldi's as a tenant, there is now someone living along the fence line in the bushes. The person or persons have set up camp with tarp. Is the village aware of this situation? And what can be done about it? Can we assist this individual? Those are three questions I posed to the board.
I can answer the scooter question for you.
Okay.
So, non-combustible engine devices such as scooters and skateboards like we have now, that's technology is bringing all these things, are theoretically legal on the sidewalks. They're not legal without a license plate on the road. They must adhere to all the rules of the road, right? Stop signs, all that kind of stuff, right? So the law, the police department can issue tickets for not stopping at a stop sign. They can issue tickets for crosswalk violations, that kind of stuff.
Because I have yet to see anybody on the sidewalk. Everything's been on the street. And then there's traffic being held back because they're in front. And mind you, some of these devices go about thirty, forty miles an hour.
I agree. And they're not allowed on the street without a license plate, right? So, uh, it's something the police department is going to have to look out for?
We're actually working to present the board with an ordinance for that. Other towns are doing the same thing. We're all running out of the same problem. We've been talking with the superintendent from the Queenby School District who's also had the same issue that you were saying. So we're working with him and we'll present an ordinance to the board exactly for that.
Thank you.
As far as the scams, the police department does a?
Clue with the blue?
Yeah, get a clue with the blue at the senior center and they talk about scams, uh, all the time. At the senior center.
Okay. And then lastly, about the individual behind Aldi's, do, are we aware of that one?
Unfortunately, the homeless situation is rampant throughout the country right now. Um, I was just talking to Matt earlier today in a different part of town where that's occurring as well. Our object is working with county to try to find resources. Unfortunately, again, they don't always want to get the resources that we offer them or that is offered to them. The owner of that area that you're talking about, we're working with that complex to try to get them pushed along a little bit so they do get resources, but we're still working on that one, Mike.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi there, my name is Sean Rowe, Gregory Avenue. Um, I'm coming here today to express my extreme concern regarding the behavior of Assistant Village Administrator Doug Flint, specifically as has been revealed in recent court filings involving both the village and Mayor Kokar. I am drawing specific attention to Mr. Flint, although, uh, the case does involve multiple members of this body because as Assistant Village Administrator, he serves as H R director and I feel that he has, um, an additional burden in this responsibility. Uh, according to the suit, Mr. Flint has stated that the village's banquet hall cannot be granted to Pakistani or Indian people because of their quote cooking smells. Um, and according to the suit, Mr. Flint has stated that the local school for imams uh, is in fact a training ground for terrorists. When, um, requested that he, uh, addressed this, he doubled down. He has displayed clear racial animus, which has already resulted in probable Title VII violations for this village. Please do the right thing and the responsible thing, protect this village from further litigation, address the issues with Mr. Flint, and as always, free Palestine. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, excuse me. Doug, do you want to, uh?
I, I'm gonna recommend we don't, we don't comment on a pending litigation. And litigation complaints are allegations. They're not proof, they're not truth, they're allegations.
I did state that it's as the litigation, um, states, yes.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm advising the board this is a pending matter, not to, uh, comment on a pending litigation matter.
Thank you very much.
All right. Is there anyone? All right. Kim Darling, Greenbrier Drive. Keith?
Yes?
What am I going to say to you?
I don't know which topic, the soccer?
The soccer field looks great.
It's making progress. You're actually seeing it now.
I know. Every day I walk by it, every day I take a picture, I'll be able to give you sixty days worth. Doug, I think this one's yours. Mr. T resigned?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, yeah, took another job.
Took another job and have we replaced his job?
Yes, resign, he isn't, his last day of service isn't yet, but
Okay.
we are still discussing the correct methodology of making that replacement, yes.
Okay, and what about Rachel's?
There's been interviews completed and we're in the process of finalizing those interviews.
Okay. My concern is, you're all male. With the exception of you, Darcy. You know what? We went from half to none. Are we working on that? Coker, I'm going to blame you on that. We had three females, we now have none.
It's not my fault.
Somebody?
You know, we have all male who applied, currently are seen for, uh?
There was not a single female.
No.
No?
Not for the, not for the public works director, there was not a single woman who applied.
Really? And what about this one?
We haven't put it up.
Not a single female?
No.
Did the ad say no females need apply? Did something happen there?
No.
Seriously?
I think public works is just a traditionally, uh?
A male job?
Male position.
So then if I look up all the other towns, those, that position's going to be all male?
No, no.
Okay.
No. Predominantly.
But look, but, uh, Richard was there for thirteen years.
Okay.
Female.
I'm just saying, we're watching, guys. We're watching.
We, we, we posted it to all the websites that are the sort of, um, the industry websites that you would go and find it and we did not receive a, a single female app.
Okay. I'm just saying, we're watching here. Okay, my last question. What about the community garden? Sorry, Keith?
No, that's all right. So the community garden, we obviously are behind on. We did get the, uh, no, I can't think of the term, the cement portion. We got the cement portion that's ready, so we'll be able to add the shed and the, uh, planter boxes for ADA compliance. The garden plots have been dug out, uh, amendments have been added to those plots. We anticipate that, uh, we are, well, we will be ready to open in the spring. Um, we have a, we're currently putting our plan together for how we're going to advertise those plots and how we're going to fill those plots. Uh, the last step, I believe, will be on the next agenda, which is we have determined we're going to work off of a well system. So we will be bringing that to the board because it's above the purchasing threshold.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, thank you. And, okay.
Ed Pope, Wayne Avenue. I got two easy ones, one for Doug, one for Chief. Doug, uh, we were at our, our, uh, community police training school yesterday and when we were walking out, one of the people asked why we don't have, uh, the E V charging stations. And I know you are working on that. Do you have an update?
Yeah, uh, the grant that we received is part of the federal grant that only eight charging stations have produced throughout the country out of that federal grant. The grant money went to the state of Illinois. The state of Illinois has not released that grant money. So there's no money available for anybody who received that grant to put in charging stations.
Well, that stinks.
That contract's up in November and as soon as that contract's up, we will reach out and figure out a different way of getting charging stations.
Okay, I just, we were talking about it after class and I knew that they were, you know, it's been like about a year since we started discussing that, so. Chief, my second one's for you. Um, if you could just, it's an enforcement thing and as you mentioned it to be, as the Coker said at the beginning of the meeting, you know, it's campaign season and stuff. People are already starting to put their signs up and over like towards your mom's house in the park down there, there, some ladies already got her signs everywhere, but they're all illegal. And, you know, no one should fight with, if someone wants to put your sign up, great, let them put your sign up. But all this illegal BS, they're on all the parkways, they're in the schools, they're on the empty corners. Um, do, do your guys pull those? I mean, I know there's things like we're not supposed to touch other people's signs, but if they're illegal, shouldn't they take them down?
So, uh, we're, matter of fact, it's a good question. Our sergeant just two days ago put out an email to the rest of the officers. The officer who is actually handling it and in charge of that, he's contacting the officials for putting the signs out. We'd like to do it that way instead. I know a lot of people have done campaigns before. It costs a lot of money for those signs. We want them to try to correct it themselves. If they do not correct it, then we're going to pull them. But we want to give them that option to take them back on their own first. And if they do not do that, then we'll pull them for them.
But, well, I mean, is there going to be a timetable on it? Like, these purple signs for this, this person's running for judge, they've already run it for four days.
Yeah, so she, he contacted, I know he contacted her yesterday. He contacted their office yesterday. So we'll give them two days. So tomorrow is the second day for it.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Name's Robinson. I, Pat, I like your idea. I'd like to elaborate a little bit more on it. Because there's going to be so many positions that are open on the board, I'd like to see the future candidates who are going to run for those positions in a debate for a public meeting so everybody can talk to them to find out what they can bring to the table. And also for all the people that are going to run for mayor, as far as to talk to them too. So we can have a debate with all the, all the people who want to run, so you can see what they're going to bring to the table also for this village.
That, that, sir, that can't be done.
That can't be done?
Cannot be done. This is a village meeting. Politics and village meetings are not able to mix together. They're two different things.
I'm not talking at the village meeting. I'm saying something separate, like, like Pat was talking about.
If the village is sponsoring it, it will not be at that meeting. A private organization can certainly run that.
Correct.
Like a women's club or a lion's club or somebody can sponsor that and you can have it here. But the village can't do it.
Correct. Okay, so you're saying like the senior cit, senior citizens sign could not do that?
No. No, but, but a, but a private organization can do it.
Okay. Well, I think that that's, I don't know, any private organizations as far as what the village is.
So like the junior women's club of Harold Stream runs it?
I'm just saying, I'm putting it out there on the table. I think that should be something that looked into so all the rest of the residents can get a chance to talk to these people and to figure out, you know, who they want to vote for. That's all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Uh, is there a motion to adjourn? Mr. Schmidt?
Motion to adjourn.
Mike?
I'll second that.
All right. Roll call vote?
You could do a voice vote, that's fine.
Do a vote.
All in favor?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Meeting?
Is adjourned.
Uh, meeting is adjourned.